Hey, we will call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order Monday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock P M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Brian Hanson.
Here.
Barb Mittman.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
First item was approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Second. Steve, any discussion? And council please vote. Approved takes us to consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Both to approve.
Sorry.
Jason, discussion? And council please vote. And that is approved. And next item is public forum. We'll begin with swearing in of our incoming public safety director. So I don't know. Uh, anybody would like to say anything to set the stage at all, but um, obviously we've gone through quite the process to identify our new public safety director. And for those of you who don't know, that'll be Mr. Chris Brandis. So Chris, you can come on forward. There'll be a very nice write-up that everyone will see that Marlis has written it to learn more about your bio and background if they don't know. Next we have Kathy Marshall, who would like to speak, and we'll have you go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Kathy Marshall, I live in apartment. It's eleven sixty-five South I Avenue apartment number six here in Nevada. I've been a resident of Nevada for twenty-two years and lived in this apartment building for fourteen. And I'm gonna read what what I observed on the weekend of the fourth and the fourth. I did not feel safe over the holiday weekend, neither my possessions nor myself. Over the weekend and the fourth fireworks were lit from the entry to our apartment parking lot. Tenants or guests could neither leave nor enter the lot. The first incident was an adolescent. The second on the fourth was an adult male. When I looked out my window, I could see misfired fireworks landing on with large balls of fire on cars parked on the street adjacent to a lot. I called the police at nine eleven and called again at approximately nine forty-five. I was told by the dispatcher that they had come and later told by a tenant that the shooters were told to move to the grass. Then they were directly in front of my car. And they were also on a property line with the adjoining apartment building. Fireworks need to be lit in a safe manner away from buildings, park cars, dumpsters, and parking lots. And I I will say that our parking lot was full, so I couldn't just move my car. And the dumpster was full of uh flammable with both lids open. Also by silver adults, which in this case they were not, with permission of the property owner, which they did not have. And I did talk to the manager of the apartment building the next day in both cases. Rules for fireworks need to be posted and fines issued when rules are broken, especially for continued offenses and repeat offenders. And in this case, the second person, the adult male shooting them off on the floor, had been in trouble before. Um, can police confiscate fireworks? I don't know. Hopefully they'll write tickets. Something needs to change in Nevada, hopefully before bodily injury or property damage. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? And council does have some good information in the packet, and you're welcome to have access to that. It did have numbers of calls. Um, and also a good report and write-up too from our from our fire chief from some of the research she's done of other communities. Um, and I'm happy to follow up to to talk about. Talk about fireworks. We've obviously had a lot of discussion about that over the last handful of years, too. Um. Yeah, and there there are safety requirements. You hit on some of them. I mean, they cannot set them off on rental properties and things like that. So um, it does look like the police responded there. Obviously, I wasn't there to know what the conversation was, but there is a five hundred dollar ticket that comes with violating the code. For any of those safety things, or if they're underage intoxicated, if it's not property they own, all those, or if it's outside of the time parameters, council said those are all violations. It's good for us to get get all the feedback so that we can continue to look at it from year to year. Louie?
Okay, you know me. Yeah, I got one question. I know that we got a grinder that was supposed to grind that concrete and asphalt. Now, do we have to pay for that person doing it? Does the city have to pay for it? I think the city should pay for that.
The the city is paying for the concrete being crushed.
Okay, good. I'll give you credit.
I was on Joe.
And um. I know this, like a lot of streets I need to be done because I talked to him and there was five supposed to be upgraded. And if we could, if we could get two done a year, I would have five. That'd be great. Because most of them, the second street, it needs to be totally torn out completely. There's no more patching. They've done some more patching. And try to, you know, and no. And I would say probably the Ace Hardware, maybe not this year, but maybe next year. That's the same thing with that place, too. They probably packed a few places and it's really bad. And it's on Second Street, just like across from Big Eight Tire Center. And so that would be nice if that one could be done next year. And then um, another thing I want to ask is about this dump place and and to me, I don't see probably next year, next summer, next year, next summer, we could possibly have a dump place by then.
Yeah, and Louie, we don't have any update for you on that. We're looking at what we're doing with the current wastewater plan and also what the what the new one is going to offer. So we need to figure out the best place for it long term, and they're in the middle of all the construction.
But you're not even looking at to that or nothing, the dump place?
We currently have no locations for a dump dump place, so we we're waiting to get all of our stuff finished and finalized at the wastewater treatment plant and see if we can utilize that that site still, or if we can utilize our new one, or if we have to figure out a a different site than our new wastewater site. But currently we are unable to use that as a dump site because we don't necessarily have, it's not in the city limits, our new.
That's that's a private, Chris owns that land.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh, it's in the county, so we wouldn't necessarily, we'd have to go through different hoops in order to to make that possible. But we are still thinking about it and trying to work through and figure out a good location for it.
Well, that'd be great, man. We can get one, you know, by hopefully not next year, next summer. That'd be great. And then if we can, if we can do two two streets a year, because he said there's five that's supposed to be upgraded. And because I think the ones he was talking about, the way I gave you a slip too, that they have to be probably torn up, because I made that, put so many patches on there. It's just like a walking boat you go on these streets I go on. And this one by the Old Memphis School, I can't remember what street that's on. By Old Memphis School, you go around here and around there, there. That's really bad.
Ninth or tenth, ninth.
Uh, it's ninth or tenth.
Oh, ninth and H, okay. Yeah, H.
Oh, something like that. But I mean.
Yeah, that road is bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Joe, I've heard about that one a few times.
And I know this one. They're all seventeen, they're working on now. For Toy City.
Hmm.
And I think, you know, they're doing that and they replace the uh sewer line or anything, which is a good deal. When you're doing that, so you don't have to do it later.
No.
And I don't know how long that's gonna take, maybe, I know you've been at it for a while. So maybe in three weeks to have that done and nothing on. Okay, concrete costs more, but that lasts longer. Oh, that's a lot longer, right? Do you agree?
Uh, currently the prices are pretty pretty uh level, which meaning that the asphalt and the concrete are pretty similar in price right now. So um, we've been sticking with concrete just because the price has been pretty similar. And like you said, it does last a lot longer. That's something that we've been doing.
Well, that's longer.
But there are, there are some roads that Joe's been working on and trying to figure out.
I'll give you credit, I seen ya.
Try trying to figure out what roads are going to be best for concrete and which ones we can actually just mill up and overlay and put a new two-inch surface asphalt.
Wow, the ones, the ones I seen, and I gave you a paper of them one time. I think they were pretty bad. You cannot patch them up or nothing. The this completely gone. They need to be torn up completely and redone.
Yeah, that one on ninth you're referring to, or ten, yeah, ninth, and it's really bad. That one needs to be torn up.
And then the one on Second. By Ace Hardware and Big Eight Tire Center.
So we did reach out to the railroad, a couple of, uh, I I think it was right after you came in here and were talking about that that area, and uh, they do have plans to come back in. Do you remember when they're planning on coming back in? I don't think it was this year. I believe it's going to be next year that they plan on coming in and redoing that surface on that on that.
Oh, I talked, I, excuse me.
That's all right. No, you're good. That was done.
And um, I talked to somebody at the railroad headquarters. I don't know what his name was, but I told him. And I did talk to another railroad guy, oh, probably a month ago, and told him. So I see this on Second um street. The sign there that says the number that you can call and stuff. And and then nothing on. I'm not put you, need to put you down, but I know one time we had a small roller. That one time. And I don't know why we got rid of that. You still have it? But that was, that was a hundred percent better than using the shovel to tap it out. Yeah, well, may maybe get a trailer that you could haul it around and. Oh, you got one? Okay, good. Give you credit. Okay, well. Okay, that's that's about like, you know, got to say and hopefully, you know, I know it takes time. It takes money and time, I know that. But hopefully in the future, I was hoping we could get these streets all maybe in six years, getting them once they're really bad. So you won't be walking the boat going down the street.
No, no, we're we're trying to get it streets from all different angles, both doing better to upkeep the ones we have, catching up on replacing of of streets. And there's a capital improvement plan that's got the five-year plan. Staff is happy to show you that, so you'd see what's what's on the plan to be done for the big projects.
Yeah. Remember how bad that bridge was over on S fourteen?
Oh, S fourteen. Oh, you mean that?
One where we're working on now?
Yeah, yep, that one.
Yeah, the one we're working on right now? Yeah. Okay.
Somebody told me they had to drive on the side of the on the other side of the street to just get through, because one side had a, I don't know.
Yeah, we were, we had quite a bit of that blocked up, because we had to work on some sewer and stuff, too.
Oh, yeah, because we need, then um.
We're doing things.
Yeah. I know, it takes time and money and stuff.
Burn money.
Every.
One project at a time.
You know, I'll give a hundred percent credit, you know, we get that done in five years.
Thanks, Louie.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Too. Is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? And then we will close the public forum and move to old business A, ordinance number ten forty-six, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. In order to submitting chapter sixty-nine parking regulations of the city code to allow parking in certain areas, third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Barb, Jason? No discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to B, approved work order of H R Green for annual renewal for G I S services.
Move to approve.
Second. Steve, Dane, discussion? And council please vote. Approved. Takes us to C, approved change order number three for twenty twenty-two street improvements from Minats in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Move to approve.
Barb? No discussion, council please vote. Approved. Takes us to D, approved pay request number four for twenty twenty-two street improvement project from Minats incorporated in the amount of hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve? No discussion, council please vote. Needs approved. Takes us to E, approved pay request number twenty-five for the wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase two from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, four dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Move to approve. Second.
And Dane? No discussion, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to F, approved pay request number fifteen for wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase three from Boomerang Corporation, in the amount of hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Move to approve.
Second. Dane, Brian? No discussion, council please vote. Approved, which takes us to G, approved pay request number ten for wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase four from On Track Construction LLC, in the amount of hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Will do approve.
Second.
No discussion, council please vote. It is approved. Takes us to new business A, resolution number two, twenty twenty-two, twenty, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, changing up on me. Resolution to approve the contract of the design phase of the well water main relocation at the U S thirty, five hundred and eightieth Avenue interchange.
Second.
Barb and Steve? Saying no discussion, council please vote. And is approved. Takes us to B, resolution number three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving master agreement for a municipal engineering services of H R Green.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve, Brian?
I have a question about. I say in here it includes so many hours a month for a certain amount a month, but it talks about anything that exceeds that is in in their uh standard hourly rate schedule. That's not included in here.
The hourly rate schedule is eighty-seven dollars. Previously it was eighty-five dollars, so they raised it to two dollars per hour.
Well, it's the same as what they're charging us for the fifty hours a month.
Oh, beyond ship rods.
It says here that they give us fifty hours at eighty-seven dollars a month, but it says anything in excess of that is billed according to their hourly rate schedule. Well, I don't know what that is, because it's not in here. I'd like to know. I mean, I don't have to have it this second, but if we, if I could have that emailed to me at some point, I'd like to look at it.
I can get you that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thought I had it with me.
Unless I missed it. I didn't. I can find it. I don't think I missed it again.
I don't see it.
Yeah. Yeah, if that's doable.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not gonna
Yeah, no.
The thing for that, but I'd still like to review it if I can.
Yep. Get that to you.
Else? Uh, council please vote. Approved. Takes us to C, removal of overhead flashing lights at Sixth Street and I Avenue, Second Street and Lincoln Highway, Tenth Street and Lincoln Highway, Fifteenth Street and Lincoln Highway.
Improve option one.
Second.
Barb, discussion?
Do all these intersections have the blinking stop signs now? I was gonna drive around this weekend, but but the other three do. Now, does fifteenth? And fifteenth, sixth and I?
Sixth and I does.
Should we look at that, you think?
Yeah, what should?
And the reason is, so we did.
Yeah, so, no, and I'm and I'm okay with removing them. I just think, I didn't know, it's, they're pretty major intersections if we should maybe look at I agree with the stop signs like we have at fifteenth, like at tenth and at Sixth Street.
I'd rather go back to the the flashing lights overhead if we're gonna do that, because flashing lights are a lot cheaper than the blinky stop signs. The blinky stop signs are at least three thousand apiece. Yeah.
And how much? To replace the overhead lights. You mean on top of the stop sign?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to figure it out tonight, but I wouldn't mind seeing some options. I think we need to do something.
I would agree.
Look at some options on those unmarked, especially unmarked, unlighted.
And we did have that discussion because we were worried about people getting used to it and then it not being there. Um, and that was kind of why he brought up, well, they have the other flashy light that we can put on there. So maybe what we need to do is just buy one and bring it to the council and show it.
I think having something to catch people's attention, especially on Lincoln, would be good because people are used to cruising.
Yeah. I wouldn't mind seeing some options. I'm not against a markonomical option, for sure, so, okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Saying none, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to reports, starting with city administrator.
Well, last week was a pretty quiet week, um, but we did have some meetings last week and the previous week, met with Burke to go over their wastewater agreement. Uh, still going over that. We will be meeting with them again uh by the end of the month. Uh, we had our standard N E D C, our Main Street meetings, our wastewater, did meet with Astra. Uh, there was a issue with the camera system that we plan on using out at the wastewater treatment facility. It has now become obsolete, so we have to kind of try to figure out another route for that. Uh, so met with Astra out there, and they also looked at some of our other facilities to um add some cameras, such as the park that we were talking about um for the bathrooms, as well as the street shed as well. But um also had Pizza Pie Losa meeting and Story County Economic Development Summit that was in Huxley.
Matt?
Have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer those.
Moving on for reports, um, the biggest thing um that was new was R V T V coming to town. I worked with Dr. Gray and met with the Pizza Pie Losa Committee. They're gonna take the lead on um, being the point for planning the downtown portion of R V T V's event, kind of like a toned-down version of Pizza Pie Losa downtown. So watch for more information on that. It's, we have September eighth, Friday night before the game, and uh we'll be putting stuff out, trying to get people to wear as much purple as they can and um support Nevada that night because they're coming to shoot the um the game at the high school and do some footage from there and some news. So um definitely it'll be interesting event. And I know last time it came, we had good turnout. I think we can do even better this year, and they tend to return to the towns that do a good job with it. So hopefully, if we do a nice job, we'll see them back more, get some good publicity for the community. I also wanted to give a shout out to Ray's team on the new new location for the city fireworks. I thought that worked really well from my perspective and let traffic flow through town a lot better to get folks in and out of there. Counsel reports. We'll go back to staff.
We'll be out uh certain painting on the streets here before too much longer. We uh, if you notice, we shouldered all the roads with our asphalt that we had ground up. So I had a lot of compliments on that. And then uh we're just working on some concrete repairs and signs. Any questions?
Thanks, Joe.
You bet.
Rick? Sounds good. Ray? Yeah, I thought Ray was gonna come up and tell us all about fireworks.
Was gonna take a few minutes for my thoughts. Just real quickly, I would let you all know that we've got a lot of neat irons in the fire and excited about some pending things that are happening in the community, but uh something that you all approved clear back close to the end of the year was uh the resolution of supports for the mid-states expansion. And so we're actually to a point now with that project to take it to the state. So it'll be considered on the state's agenda next Friday. And so uh it's like everything, you know, when folks get a the kind of project itself has changed in terms of how it'll look a little uh that increased in price a little, but uh the resolution you all did was still very applicable. So stay posted when that becomes official. Next Friday, we'll make a an announcement announcing the project as well as some renderings on the project. So wanted to give you an update. It's been a long time coming, and we're excited for that announcement to be made.
And then?
We have a lot going on Main Street. Um, it's been pretty active. I sometimes don't feel it, but people will walk in and say, there is so much going on down here. But I had somebody walk in from another town in Story County, and she said, I want to move my business here. You guys have way more going on. So um, so it's good to know that other people outside of Nevada feel it. Uh, we have an increase of investors um this year from other years. We're at about eighty right now. A couple of fun ones. Uh, we got one from Ames that reached out to us, but when I do invest in our Main Street. Uh, we got one from Ames that reached out to us that wanted to invest in our main street. And uh, we also have a business who doesn't even have a brick and mortar in Nevada, and they wanted to be part of Main Street, so I thought those were fun and. And um, neat progressions to people that are that are joining our organization, so. Um, we, I think by the end of this year are gonna become kind of a restaurant destination downtown. TE Alderman's is still planning to come. That building's taking, the general building's taking longer than planned, but. Uh, Mark is still very, very much anticipating opening TE Alderman's yet this year. Uh, we have another food establishment that is signing a lease in a building this month. And then another one that is in. Ending um, renting on another building downtown, so by the end of the year, we could have three more restaurants downtown, so that's exciting. Um, we just have a few empty buildings right now. Ben Franklin is. No movement on that that we know of. Um, and then just a couple others that are actively looking for winters as well, so uh, it's a good problem to have. I get phone calls all the time, people wanting to come to Nevada, and I'm like, I don't have a whole lot of space downtown, so. Um, we'll look at some future things we can change, maybe to get, open up some more spaces in our downtown. Um, another fun thing that we started, which was on the twenty forty plan, is we brought back the welcome bags, so Marla's and I last week. Took welcome bags, which consist of. Um, items that businesses have donated. There's a really nice packet of information that Marla's put together about the city. Um, you know, how tall your grass can be before you have to mow it, that kinda thing. Um, and we delivered ten last month, there was ten this month, so. Um, only we learned that we can't go during the day, cause people aren't home, but the few people who did answer their door were ecstatic and super excited and. Happy to be greeted by somebody and get some questions answered, so. Um, so yeah, so that's taken off good and going well. Um, Steve, what am I saying?
That's a lot.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot going on downtown. Like I said, I just. It's fun when people from other communities say, what is happening in Nevada? I keep hearing about Nevada, so. We're doing something right. Any questions?
Emily? Karen?
Well. Well, I wanted to thank everybody for the support and coming out tonight. Um. Don't have a lot going on with the summer calls for service have kind of increased, uh, just. Busy as everybody gets out and starts doing things, so officers have been working pretty hard. Uh, with Fourth of July, we we responded to quite a few firework complaints, so we actually ended up calling an officer in early on Fourth of July, do the. Um, how spread out the complaints were and trying to respond in a timely manner and try to um, enforce that. Regulation. But uh, around that, we. Our Ross hiring opportunity for patrol officer, we um, have closed that with no applicants moving forward, so we'll be looking forward to doing another posting. To uh, try to find identify a good candidate to send to the next academy that's open, so. Otherwise, I would try to answer any questions you guys have.
I would say I was at a couple places over the weekend. Where there might have been the neighbor or somebody firing off fireworks, and I thought the. PD handled it pretty well, I think. I don't know if the word overzealous is the word, you could, like, you guys could get that way pretty easy. I thought they handled it pretty well as far as. Educating and and you know, and saying, hey, come on, guys, you know. Shouldn't be doing that, and most people listen, so. Kudos for what I seen anyway.
Appreciate it.
They handled it pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
So I was gone last week on vacation to Branson, which was. Pretty fun and relaxing, so. Um. I'll be sending out my letters to the abandoned properties here in town by the end of the week. Uh, I started my. Uh, program for that and getting that all organized and and everything documented, so I mean, from. This point on, same thing with all the nuisances, they. Rely heavily on documentation and and stuff like that, so by the end of the week, there'll. I think there's fourteen that I'm mailing out, so they'll go certified in regular mail, so I look forward to. Hearing from those people that. Letters to, so any questions? Perfect, thanks, guys.
Karen?
Um, just working on council stuff. Karen was gone last week, so. I only had a bugger once, I think, just good. Um, we did have a meeting with Saltac. I'm not sure if we informed you guys of that, but working hard on the backend. To try to figure out how to move forward with that.
Brennan?
I don't really have anything to add to the memo we provided unless there's.
Where are we with Boomerang and their? It says that they've submitted a contract extension claim, and maybe Mike needs to speak to that.
Yeah.
But um. It just, it doesn't sound like. Sounds like they were a little. Things I would have hoped.
And go ahead, Mike. You're breaking up, Mike.
Kinda cut.
Is Mike an evolution?
How about now, can you?
Don't break it up, Mike.
And maybe he can give us an update, email it to us or something on that.
What was the question, Barb?
Couldn't hear the question. Where are we? Where are we with Boomerang? Because in. In the stuff that we approved, it's it said that they had submitted a time extension request. But. It's being reviewed, the recommendation's coming. And it just sounded like it, it's taken them a while to get to that. I'm concerned about how much we can gain. Um, by the time we actually get, because some of, it looks like everything else is on schedule to be. I just, there had been a meeting on June twenty-first, that's. Why I was asking.
Yep, um. So currently, they are about seven months behind schedule. They have a lot of the stuff fixed and um, updated to the, from the issues that we were having, so they have reported some of the concrete areas. They have. Done that, so I believe that they're on pace to finishing, but because this. Process took a long time, they did end up getting seven months behind, so um, we're looking at, I wanna say. Brandon, you may know, wasn't it the end of December and then they're. Hopefully going to start testing and was it January or something? Or February?
You're still, you're still breaking up. I mean, has Boomerang put things in process to try to get caught up? Are they just even keel?
Um, from what I have noticed. No, they take off, they take half days on Fridays. Uh, every time I'm down there, I don't really see too much activity, so I. Uh, Harold is not here this evening, but I believe he would be able to touch on that a little bit more. Um. And. Both HR Green and Harold have been. Tracking all of that as well, so when they do ask for extra days, we can tell them, no, we're not going to because of. What we have seen and noticed or observed.
But there's the the whole list that was part of our agenda for that item. There was some work on, done with the lift station and some stored materials, but every other category, every other. Division that they were. To be. That they're attached to in this project says no work completed.
Yep, so the other, the other uh, thing that we required is we we uh, we required a third party engineer. To be be on site with them, so that might be part of the issue is coordinating the schedule, schedule with Chuck Britson, because that's the. The onsite engineer that's coming to to be, make sure that they're doing all the correct words, yeah.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, I know, two weeks ago, they were out there, Chuck Britson was out there and they were doing some more repairs. But since the holiday week, I don't know how much was completed. Down there. I haven't been down there today.
We have any kind of. Avenue to put. I don't know if pressure is the word, but to encourage them to work a little bit more.
We do.
Do we need to start looking at that, being that they're seven months behind already? Cause at what point are they gonna hold up the whole? Everybody else on the.
They're already holding up everybody else. They're supposed to be done June ninth.
So, um, in December? That's substantial.
We're gonna be behind schedule. All of the projects are going to be behind schedule now because of the lift station, cause we can't really do anything without the lift station piece of it. So um. Yeah, that's. Definitely what Mike and I have been discussing and figuring out what what are these next steps if we don't get it completed on time, because. We're gonna be the one getting hit with the bill from the DNR for the penalties, so. We need to figure that all all out, and I've expressed my concern with it, and let them know that the city will not be responsible for. These liquidated damages from not basically finishing the permit in time or the the. Um. Treatment facility in time for that permit. And I'll have Mike send a an update. He can probably go into a lot more detail than I I did. Uh, but yeah, I'll have all of Mike's under an update over uh, to me, and I can forward that over to you guys.
Thank you, thank you, that helps.
Bond to Aaron Clayton.
Good evening, nothing for me, just thank you for the flexibility.
Problem. Hey, anything else for reports before we move to closed session? Saying none, next item is closed session pursuant to Iowa Code section twenty-one point five one I. To evaluate the professional competency of an individual's appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge. Is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session.
Move to approve. When's the session?
Sandy? Council, please vote.
No lights.
No lights.
But yeah, I just, I didn't start it. It's going now, so four more votes, sorry.
I still don't have a light.
Me neither.
Oh, Brenda, oh, there, three, three more now.
Hi.
Does anybody wanna head again?
I don't have a light at all.
I don't have a light either. Yeah, eh, I.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes. Voice call.
Chris, Miranda's story is live. My Facebook notifications are going.
I feel like this.
Congratulations.
There's always issues when I'm on the.
Okay, so. You're fine, Brandon, thank you.
We'll allow it.